No, he was scared, but he was still looking.
All right. It is now 7:02 PM and I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, May 19, 2025. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carubus.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Ms. Fosdick.
Here.
And Ms. Gents.
Here.
We have a quorum. Ms. Gents, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some board salutes tonight. We'll start out with Ms. Demming.
Good evening. Corporate-sponsored National Merit Scholarship winners. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation released the names of the second group of winners in the 70th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Approximately 830 distinguished high school seniors have won corporate-sponsored National Merit Scholarship Awards financed by about 124 corporations, company foundations, and other business organizations. Four District 204 high school seniors were named in this year's competition. Monish Ramash, Jacob Mar, Armon Sidhu, and Melin Sun from Niqua Valley, and Vikram Narishan from Wabonzi Valley. Congratulations on this stellar achievement.
Ms. Jane.
District 204 seniors awarded Rotary Youth Scholarships. The Board salutes several District 204 students for receiving youth scholarship awards from the Rotary Club of Naperville. This year's recipients include Matia Valley seniors Zach Johnson and Isabella Seben, Niqua Valley seniors Ilajina Dabazik, Lauren Varak, and Emily Wu, and Wabonzi Valley seniors Xavier Benito and Matthew Weiner. These scholarships funded through generous donations from the Rotary Club of Naperville, Naperville Sunrise Rotary, Naperville Rotary Charities, Naperville Rotary Foundation, and members of the Slocum family range from $2,000 to $5,000. Congratulations to all the scholarship recipients.
Mr. Carubus.
Matia Valley seniors achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. The Board salutes Matia Valley seniors Jeremiah Cicero and Henry Freeman for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest advancement rank in scouting. For his scout project, Jeremiah cleaned up overgrown bushes and plants and created a new flower bed at River Glen Presbyterian Church in Naperville. Henry built and installed a little free library at Grace United Methodist Church, also in Naperville. Congratulations to Jeremiah and Henry on achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scouts. Are any of them here?
Ms. Gents.
And I do have two. Illinois State Board of Education College and Career Pathway endorsements. The Board salutes the seniors from Niqua Valley and Wabonzi Valley High Schools who recently earned Illinois State Board of Education College and Career Pathway endorsements. These students earned the endorsements by following a personalized learning plan, taking classes focused on a specific career path, and gaining real-world experience through professional learning opportunities. Great job to all the students on this achievement. District 204 high schools recognized as Project Lead the Way 2024-25 Distinguished Schools. The Board salutes Matia Valley, Niqua Valley, and Wabonzi Valley High Schools on being recognized as Project Lead the Way Distinguished Schools. The Project Lead the Way recognition program is designed to honor districts and schools committed to increasing student access, engagement, and achievement in Project Lead the Way programs. Project Lead the Way Distinguished Schools have achieved exemplary results from their programs and are empowering students to thrive in an evolving world. District 204 has three of the 661 high schools in the country to receive this honor for the 2024-2025 school year. Congratulations to all involved.
Mr. Rising.
2025 Best Communities for Music Education. The National Association of Music Merchants Foundation named District 204 as one of the 2025 Best Communities for Music Education. The award acknowledges schools and districts across the country for their commitment and support for music education. The selection process is facilitated by the Music Education Research Institute at the University of Kansas and is based on music class participation, instruction, facilities, and overall support for music education programming. This is the 14th year Indian Prairie has received this national recognition. Congratulations to all our music teachers who provide outstanding music opportunities for our students.
Ms. Fosdick.
2025 IAH-PERD Health Education Teacher of the Year. The Board salutes Niqua Valley Health Teacher Laura Wallen on being named the Health Education Teacher of the Year by the Illinois Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. This award recognizes individuals who are making a significant difference in the lives of students through their health education practices. Congratulations on this outstanding accomplishment.
I would like to have one more applause for all of those great accomplishments, so thank you so much. So our next regular board meeting is on Monday, June 9. And next up is our Student Representative Report by Soha Panchal from Matia Valley High School.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, I am Soha Panchal and I am the Executive Board Representative from Matia Valley High School. As always, it's an honor for me to be here with you all today as we are approaching the end of the school year. First, I would like to start off with our general updates. Our Captain's Council visited the Hill and Granger Middle Schools to give the eighth graders a taste of life at Matia Valley and provide opportunities to get involved. We had 700 students attend prom on April 25th, and our math team was eighth in state, our calculator team was fourth in state, and one student even had a perfect score. Skills USA had many students earn gold, silver, and bronze at state, and we had a team make top 20 at DECA out of 212 teams. Our news team, The Maine, won the High School Emmys. Next, I would like to move on to athletics. Leaders from our Captain's Council will be hosting our first athletics SBs today. The badminton team are going to sectionals this Thursday, and the water polo team starts sectionals next week. Lastly, fine arts. The Matia Valley Mariachi Band performed at the First Annual Illinois Music Education Association Mariachi Festival held at South Elgin High School on Saturday, April 26. Our spring musical Legally Blonde was a huge success, and we hosted the Fine Arts Festival this weekend. That's all for the board meeting today. Thank you all, and I look forward to updating you all on Matia Valley in the future. Go Gamastas!
All right, our next topic is our school spotlight, and tonight it is McCarty Elementary, and we will have a presentation from Ms. Sherry Fredericks and Ms. Laura Reyes.
Good evening. I am Sherry Fredericks, proud principal at McCarty Elementary School.
And I'm Laura Reyes. I'm a reading specialist at McCarty Elementary School.
Thank you to Dr. Tally and the Board of Education for inviting us tonight to talk about our annual readout. This is an event that has been happening. It's our eighth annual readout. It would have been the ninth if it wasn't for the 2020 year. So, thank you for just giving us a chance to share some information, and hopefully, if you haven't RSVP'd to attend the readout, it's not too late because it's this Friday. So, we're gonna start. Last year, we were fortunate to have NCTV come and do a really nice little about-two-minute segment on the readout. We thought they did a beautiful job explaining a little bit more about it, so...
Each grade level has a 30-minute block of time where they'll be outside to meet with their families who come to read with them. As the students walk outside, they receive a free bag of 10 books that they will be taking home for the summer to continue their reading over the summer, as well as a reading journal, some colored pencils, and some reading activities to go with the books.
Students snuggled up to their parents, opening books full of worlds they explore together, and proudly showed them the reading progress they made over the year. Whether they were reading to a caregiver, each other, by themselves, or were being read to, the pages kept on turning.
Everyone loves books and everyone loves to read, so it's a great celebration.
McCarty Elementary has hosted the readout for seven years. It was brought to the school by Reyes, who first held it with their first graders at Colishaw Elementary before bringing it to McCarty.
I spoke with my reading improvement team, and they were on board to doing it with our reading improvement students, but then my team suggested, "Let's make it a whole-school event," and we have ever since.
Reyes said the readout grows every year with more parents participating alongside their young readers. She hopes to see more schools in the district, take a page out of McCarty's book, and implement a similar reading event.
Showing students the joy of books and reading and celebrating how much now they can read at the end of the year, whether they're reading the pictures or pointing to those sight words, they know they're celebrating, "I am a reader." No matter what age they've grown as a reader this year, and it's so important to celebrate that.
For Naperville News 17, I'm Jesus Cortez.
So like the video said, when I was at Colishaw for 10 years teaching first grade, my team did an annual spring readout. It was, we just invited parents in to celebrate how much they'd grown that year and any published work, too, they would share with their families. And brought it up to my team when I moved to McCarty as a reading specialist, and they said, "No, no, it should be a whole-school event." I'm like, "Okay," and so we've done that ever since. So it's, that's how it started. One of, we wanted to share a lot of the benefits of the readout tonight as well, and one of them is how the community really comes together to celebrate the hard literacy work achieved that year by students and to simply enjoy books together and encourage, as well as model, that volume reading. Over the years, we've added more and more VIP community members, some of whom are in this room. I'd like to thank always our supporters from the board, like Dr. Tally and many of you, and even your dogs have come to our readout to support our kiddos. We've also included the Aurora Fire Department, the police chief. This year, the mayor of Aurora is coming, and Estambul McCarty himself, as you see on the slide. Another benefit of the readout is that it occurs rain or shine. So if there is inclement weather, we simply switch the readout to a read-in inside the gym, as you see there. And we try to make it festive. We use McCarty's wonderful Lou projector. That's what you see on the wall there. We're one of the very lucky schools with the Lou, and we put a little outdoor scene so it feels outdoorsy, and the kiddos can still cuddle up with their families and blankets and read in the gym instead of outside. And of course, we do have students who may not be able to have their guests, family members, attend, in which case, they join up with other friends and family members or our wonderful VIPs from the community that attend as well. And one of the key priorities in our district strategic plan is optimizing resources, and another benefit of the readout is to get ahead of that dreaded summer slide when it comes to the lack of summer reading that occurs over the summer months. We do this by choosing to pass out our Title I District Purchase Summer Reading Packs to our students as they enter the readout. Each Scholastic Book Pack contains 10 books at their grade level, a writing journal, colored pencils, and family reading activities to do before, during, and after reading, as well as a journal that they can do reading responses in for each book, and then a log at the end with the certificate for like how many books they read in the summer. I brought, this is a fourth-grade example here, and then a first-grade example of what comes in the bag over there. It's very important for us to pass out these materials at the readout so we know and see and enjoy seeing them immediately being used by families, by students with their parents, and they're not just thrown in the closet over the summer and probably forgotten about when they go to the pool. This year, we added something new as well to increase that fight against the summer slide. We invited Aurora Public Library to our event as another resource for parents to stop by and learn about free summer reading opportunities, to get library cards if they don't have them for the summer. And then also new this year, they shared with us, they're doing a bookmobile, and we're gonna have them stop by McCarty over the summer as well to encourage that summer reading.
So, the next couple slides are just pictures of everyone enjoying the time reading, looking through their bags, what resources are in there. Like Laura had said, if a family can't come to the readout, the kids just join another family. It's really a wonderful thing to just, everybody just kinda figures it out and joins, you know, either a VIP or another family on their blanket and starts reading. Another slide of some of our VIPs. Principal Stip has come over. Nice introduction to their future principal. And then, of course, I know everyone has received this invitation, but if you haven't RSVP'd yet and you would like to attend, these are the times on Friday. And like Laura said, it'll be rain or shine. Location will, you know, be determined on Friday. So, thank you for this time and listening to our readout information.
Thank you for highlighting this excellent event. I know many of us on the board have participated over the years, and it is really an exciting opportunity to see how thrilled these students are to receive that bag of books. And I know my dog Nessie loves coming, too, so we will see you on Friday again, so thank you so much.
I just wanna, I have a moment to congratulate Ms. Reyes as well. On Saturday, and I'm gonna speak about this a little bit later, but since she's here, she was one of the recipients of Those Who Excel, and she, tonight, I think, explains why she excels in all that she does, so I want to congratulate you in person again.
So I think this is our favorite board meeting every year because we get to do lots of recognitions, and that just helped fall into the next category of all of these different recognitions. So, we're gonna start out with, we're going to have Dr. Nicole Howard present our appreciation to the Student Advisory Board.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Tally, and our amazing IPSD community here. Tonight, we would like to welcome new members of the Student Advisory Board and say farewell to some of our graduating seniors who have served us all year. So we'll begin with our new members. New members, when your name is called, please stand and remain standing. Zara Ahmed, Jay Akori, Reyes Baggett, Nandani Chakbarathy, Grace Dewan, Aliza Fawad, Rukia Mohammed Arus, Edhant Ragin, Ojas Sichan, Sharuthi Karapu Karin. Ms. Gents, will you lead them in the oath of office?
I have them raise their right hand.
All right, everyone, yep. You already know, you're so good.
I, state your name, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Student Advisory Member to the Board of Education of Indian Prairie in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois, to the best of my ability.
You guys repeat that now? I'm not gonna make you repeat the whole thing at once, we're gonna go step by step.
All right, excellent. I further swear that I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow students, board members, and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a student advisory member has no authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote of the members of the Board of Education at a public board meeting. I shall respect and follow all board norms and understand that only the Board President may speak on the Board's behalf. I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while agreeing to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As a member of the Student Advisory to the Board, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Indian Prairie. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall serve as advocate on behalf of my fellow students to advance the vision for Indian Prairie. And I shall strive to work together with the district administration to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Well done! Congratulations!
Do you mind if we have the students?
They did not know what they were signing up for.
Can the students come up for a quick photo? Do we have time?
Yeah.
Students, come up, please. Don't be shy, come on, come on, come on. Just feel right. Thank you, students. And fortunately, the new members will not be serving alone because we have some students who are current members who will continue into next year. And at this time, I'm gonna have our current members just stand to be recognized. Thank you, you may be seated. And now, this part always makes me a little bit sad because I always enjoy working with the students, and when it's time to say goodbye, that just never, is never easy. So lastly, we want to recognize and bid farewell to the seniors who served on the advisory. We appreciate their dedication, time, and insights. It's not easy balancing the demands of senior year with the time commitment of being a SAB member, so thank you for all you've contributed. When I call your name, please stand. We have Heba Haake. It's okay, you can clap. Shrada Hiraharan. Isabel Harper. Dia Menon. Vida Kothethala. And Samir Persada. Thank you again for your service. And all the members received their awards prior to this meeting today, to save time. And I want to give special recognition to the executive members because in addition to attending to attending board meetings and providing perspective, they set agendas and met with their committee members throughout the school year, collaborated with other organizations, they researched and implemented solutions to address student concerns. So when I call your name, please come up and accept your service award, and then take a seat for the final presentation. That's Dia Menon. And Sarayu Mandala. And filling in for executive member, Sohal Phong, who couldn't make it tonight, is Isabel Harper. Okay, so we want to give the final presentation of the school year. As you know, this is, we're finishing our fourth year of the Student Advisory, and I feel like each year we get a little bit smarter and a little bit better at what we do, and we expect the future years to be no different. So we will begin with reflections from Wobansi.
Hello, everyone. So to start off, Wobansi has had a very productive year, especially in regards to student outreach and just getting our student population more familiar with what the SAB does as a whole, not just within our school, but also within the district. And we feel that we made significant progress with that. To start off, we continued raising awareness and exploring the possibility of zero hour PE. So this involved talking and discussing with current students of all grade levels of their expectations for zero hour PE, so how they would want to use that opportunity, as well as asking teachers if they would be willing to implement that as a way to either allow students to have more study time or any other alternatives to that. We also went into researching more about student drug use, so researching where and why high schoolers are vaping and smoking. Once again, that's with these drug policies that we've heard are going to be discussed a little bit more in the upcoming year. We also worked on student and staff connections, so we outreach to deans, we did some student and teacher surveys, as well as reaching out to various heads of departments, so whether that be the Science Department, Social Studies Department, just to see if we can connect to alumni. Furthermore, another thing that we also did that's not on the slideshow is we talked with some members of Lockport High School about our tribe time, because they were very interested in tribe time, and they wanted to sort of explore the possibilities of implementing it in their own district. So we had some conversations with them, and they gave us some feedback a few weeks later, saying they really enjoyed that conversation and are looking to see if they can implement it, because they believe it would also benefit their student body. So yeah.
All right. My name is Isabel Harper, and I'm representing Niqua Valley. We, this year, won the Blue Ribbon Award, so we were pretty happy with academics and athletics. But there were a couple more like fine tuning, like, community things that we decided to work on. One thing that we did was the Israeli-Palestine Roundtable Talk, so we met with members of various organizations, our Student Equity and Muslim Student Association as well, and then a couple other various ones, and it was open to anybody. But we just had a very, like, real, raw conversation about, from both sides. We had people who agreed with one side, and people who agree with the other, people who were neutral, and we tried to just share facts, and then also just get opinions and humanize the whole situation, because it is a very important topic for our school specifically. Along with that, we also worked with Palow Meats. So we unfortunately just found a lot of roadblocks, and we decided it probably wasn't something our district would be able to implement. But we did a couple surveys on it to see what the want for it was in our school, and also talked to a couple people about how this would exactly work, what were the logistics of it. Another thing we focused on a lot was mental health and awareness, so the Confront the Elephant podcast was something I was really proud to work on with Sohal. And we tried to just make, again, like, real, raw conversations, a big part of our school is just connecting people through humanity, and so that's what we really tried to do. A couple extras that we did where we made our own website for just the SAB to try to get more people to understand what we are, get more student feedback, have people reach out to us, and it worked pretty well. Also, reporting to our principal, we talked to Dr. Fur a few times, and that was really good, that he was very responsive to what we had to say. And we also did Community Service Night as well, so we had various community members and all of our community service clubs come in and just have like a big night to show off what they do, get people interested in it, and kind of make connections through that as well.
Hello, my name is Sarayu Mandala, and I'm representing Matia Valley. I'm really proud of what we've done this year. One of the main things that we've worked on was something called In Depth and Not. This is basically an alternative to suspension for vaping. So I know that's something that we talked about in our Board of Education discussions last year. So we were able to create a solution that is an alternative to vaping. So how it would work is we would address the root problem, the root cause of the vaping, to get that behavior to stop, instead of just simply giving someone detention or suspensions. There have been several studies on this method, and it's been, it's been found that there's a 60% in decrease in recurrence rates when we implement this program. So right now, we're testing that at the alternative high school, and in the fall, we'll be hopefully seeing it at Matia, Wobansi, and Niqua, based on the logistics and how it ends up working out at the alternative school. So some of the things that we're really excited about working on for next year is bringing electronic passes to Matia. Right now, it's at Wobansi, and we currently have a meeting scheduled with Mr. DeBrocker to discuss how to bring that to Matia, and different ways we can get that done next year. Some of the other things are opening up more access areas after school. Right now, an issue that a lot of students have is not being able to study after school, or if they're waiting for their parents to pick them up. There aren't a lot of places they can go, other than sitting around in the vestibule, which isn't necessarily safe either. So we're looking into more solutions with that at a district-wide level. And another thing that we found for a lot of the female population at Matia is a lot of class time is being taken out for literally just finding, getting, going to the nurse's office to get pads. Because of a lot of the vandalism that we see in the bathrooms, they started removing pads from the bathrooms. So now, every single time, a student has to go get a pad, they have to go all the way to the nurse's office. All that's really done is cut into class time and is a very big pain for many students, so we're looking at introducing pads in the houses. And another thing that we're looking at doing is bringing students into the process of designing curriculums in some way, shape, or form, so students can be a little bit more hands-on in what they actually end up learning and giving input during those curriculum designing sessions.
And so some of the discussion with the students, as we think about next year and improvements that we want to make, it's becoming more involved in the course selection process, and becoming more familiar with the proposals that are going to the Board of Education beforehand to try to get more feedback on the front end as the proposals are being written, and supporting the implementation of items that get approved by you. So, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with all the students, and I know that they enjoyed working with you, and so we appreciate all of the support and the time that you've given to hear their voices.
Thank you so much for asking. We really appreciate the Student Advisory Board and their voices and their input, and the value we have for having that come into our Board is something that was relatively new, and we really like having that. So, thank you so much. I know this was extra work on your part, besides all of the school classwork, so thank you. Yeah, all right. So, next up, we have our Inspire Awards. The mission of Indian Prairie School District is to inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential. Tonight, we will be presenting four District 204 Awards to recognize individuals and organizations who make a meaningful and lasting impact on the students of Indian Prairie School District. The first award is the Illuminate Award.
And before I start, if I could have Crossroads Community Church come up and stand next to me, and if Gombert would like to as well. The mission of Indian Prairie School District is to inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential. Tonight, we will be presenting four District 204 Awards to recognize individuals and organizations who make a meaningful and lasting impact on the students of Indian Prairie School District. Our first award this evening is the Illuminate Award, which is presented to a community member or organization dedicated to supporting District 204 students and the community. This year's Illuminate Award is presented to Crossroads Community Church. Accepting the award on behalf of the church is Meredith, is it Kutzal? Oh, excellent. Director of Missional Care. For over five years, Crossroads has partnered with Gombert Elementary to provide essential resources, foster a caring community for Gombert students, and support educators, truly embodying the spirit of this award through their compassion and commitment to students' success. Their dedication goes far beyond occasional assistance. They consistently provide items such as clothing, school supplies, and snacks, helping to ensure that every child feels secure, confident, and ready to learn. Their ongoing generosity bridges critical gaps for families in need and removes barriers that can prevent a student's ability to focus on education. In recognition of your dedication to enhancing lives and creating a caring, inclusive environment, the Indian Prairie School District 204 Board of Education is proud to present the 2025 Illuminate Award to Crossroads Community Church. Congratulations. Yes. Oh, okay.
Okay, all right, we're going to do all the, we'll do the picture at the end.
They're very sturdy.
We're going to do a picture at the end of all the award winners. Okay. All right, next up is the Impact Award.
If I could have Mr. Matthew White come up. I'm going to read something while you stand here. Our second award is the Impact Award, which is given to a staff member who has made a significant difference in the lives of our students. The recipient of the Impact Award is Matthew White. Matthew is an orchestra teacher at Skullon Middle School and has spent the past 10 years shaping the lives of more than 2,500 students through his passion for music and commitment to students' well-being. His influence extends far beyond the music instruction. Matthew creates a classroom environment that encourages kindness, connection, and emotional growth. As many have said, walking into his classroom feels like a hug. With care and compassion, Matthew helps his students grow as musicians and encourages them to be kind, confident, and active members of the community. Matthew's belief is each student's potential creates a supportive environment where they feel valued, empowered, and motivated to succeed. On behalf of the Indian Prairie School District Board of Education, I'm pleased to present you with the 2025 Impact Award. Congratulations.
Okay, our next award is the Ignite Award.
If I could have Ashka Metta come join me. I have the great privilege of presenting our third award, the Ignite Award, which is given to students who are emerging leaders and demonstrate exemplary qualities within a District 204 student organization. I've known Ashka for some time, so this is very special. The Ignite Award is presented to Niko Valley Junior Ashka Metta, a young leader who has made a big difference in our community. Ashka has always looked for ways to help others. At Springbrook Elementary, she welcomed new students, spent summers tutoring them in math and English, and planned and participated in science fairs. Each year, she generously donates half of her birthday gifts, giving all her birthday money to Gregory PTA. One year, at Gregory Middle School, she helped organize a multicultural night during COVID. As a junior ambassador at Hesid House, she leads donation drives for food, clothes, and household items. She now volunteers at a doctor's clinic and recently became a member of the Seva Foundation, a Hindu-based, Hindu faith-based nonprofit humanitarian organization focused on disaster relief, community support, and voluntary, volunteer training. At Niqua Valley, Ashka has served on the Executive Board of the Girls and STEM Club since her freshman year, where she actively works to inspire and empower more girls to pursue their interests in science and technology. Ashka's kindness, leadership, and commitment to help others truly makes her stand out. On behalf of the Indian Prairie School District Board of Education, I am pleased to present you with the 2025 Ignite Award. Congratulations.
Okay, our last Inspire Award is the Inspire Award, and I would like Janet Ziarco Anderson to join me at the podium.
I now have the honor of presenting the most prestigious award of the evening, the Inspire Award. This award is given to an individual or entity that has demonstrated exemplary service to the District 204 over a sustained period of time. This year's recipient, Janet Ziarco Anderson, is a Special Education Assistant at Springbrook Elementary, who goes above and beyond every single day. She connects with the students, especially those who need extra care and support, and brings kindness, creativity, and joy into everything she does. In addition to her dedication to the students, Janet is a tremendous support for staff. She maintains the staff lounge snacks, creates outstanding SCL bulletin boards, and helps organize classrooms. Janet's impact reaches far beyond the walls of Springbrook Elementary. She volunteers at the McDonald's Foundation fundraisers, participates in the Indian Prairie Education Foundation Naperville Half Marathon, 10K and 5K, helps lead 5th Grade Student Council, serves as one of the Classified Staff Union Representatives, showing her dedication to both our school and the wider community. Thank you, Janet, for your incredible dedication and service to our district. You are an inspiration to our students and community, and we are grateful for everything all that you do. On behalf of the Indian Prairie School District Board of Education, I am pleased to present you with this 2025 Inspire Award, but please wait. I purposely asked to present this because a lot of people, I don't know who was on the committee that picked these winners, but they did a fabulous job, and especially with Janet. I have always known that she's a very special person for myself and my family, who got a front row seat here, my sister, my husband, my son, because Janet was our nanny and raised our children from when they were little babies until high school. And so we always knew she was special, and it's great to see the school district now recognize her also as a very special person. So thank you. So, thank you.
Good evening. I am incredibly honored and honestly a little overwhelmed to be standing here as the recipient of this year's Inspire Award. To be chosen out of so many other nominees across our school district is truly humbling, and I wanted to start by saying a big thank you to Dr. Natalie Hoyle Ross, who nominated me, and quite honestly, could be receiving this honor herself. Winning this award means more to me than I can put into words. Thank you to the Board of Education and the Selection Committee for believing that my efforts had made a meaningful impact on the students of Springbrook. Working in special education is not something you do for recognition. Most days, the reward is the little moments, a student's breakthrough, a colleague's encouragement, a small step forward, or just a high five. But to know that those moments have added up to something that inspired others is an incredible feeling. This award is a reflection of the people around me. All of you. My amazing colleagues, supportive leaders, my family allowing me to have good days and bad days, and the students and families who remind me every day why this work matters. I share this honor with all of you. Thank you again for this recognition. I am truly grateful.
All right, we're gonna have pictures now. All the winners come up here, and we're gonna have a picture.
All right, we have one other set of awards we're giving out tonight, which are Outstanding Service Awards for our student board representatives who have given us a briefing all year and have been fantastic.
So, as Ms. Donahue mentioned, these awards are going to our students who have come and presented at the board meetings. And our first one is to Ms. Emily Shield. Emily? Emily is a senior, and Emily, she will be going to Bates, which is where my goddaughter's brother has just finished his first year there. So, if you need a connection, I can connect you with Graham, and that way you'll know someone there. Congratulations. We have this award for you and a gift card to Emily. Then to our junior, Soha Pangchau. Are you here still with us, Soha? She left, so we have an award for her, but she will be back next year. Another junior, Benjamin Gula. Is Benjamin with us still? Here we are, Benjamin. Thank you, Benjamin, for all you've done. And then, so let's get Benjamin and Emily up here, and we'll do one picture.
As is our custom, the board would also like to take this opportunity to recognize our administrative retirees. Tonight, we are honoring Kimberly Malone.
Whereas, Kimberly Maloney devoted 14 years of her career to serving students and families of Indian Prairie School District 204 with leadership roles as an assistant principal at Gregory Middle School, an assistant principal at Matea Valley High School, and the principal of the STEPS program. And whereas, Ms. Maloney started her 31-year career in education as a language arts and science teacher at C.S. McCullough School in Chicago. She held teaching positions at Glenside Middle School in Glendale Heights and West Chicago High School before being appointed Dean of Students at Plainfield North High School. She later served as the Athletic Director at Hensdale South High School. And whereas, Ms. Maloney earned her bachelor's degree from DePaul University and her master's degree from Aurora University. And whereas, Ms. Maloney was elected to the Illinois School Board Association in 2005, serving Winfield School District 34. And whereas, Ms. Maloney is a dedicated Special Olympics volunteer and Make-A-Wish service member. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Indian Prairie School District 204 Board of Education, Administration, and Community honor Ms. Kimberly Maloney's dedication and devotion to the students, teachers, and parents of our community. We are grateful for all she has done for our students, and we wish her the best as she moves into the next chapter of her life's journey. Indian Prairie Community School District 204 Board of Education and Administration, May 2025.
Kim, would you like to say something?
Thank you. It's my greatest privilege.
Thank you.
We now move to our Consent Agenda and Superintendent Report. We have no public comment tonight. We will start with the Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education, Indian Prairie community. We're approaching the end of the school year with a myriad of things that are happening and being accomplished at each of our schools, from 5th Grade clapout at the elementary level to promotion ceremonies at the middle schools, to prom at the high schools. All of those and more are happening in our buildings. This Saturday, I was able to attend our annual Fine Arts Festival. It was a delight to see all the artwork that students have created and listen to the wonderful music that our students performed. I want to thank all the teachers for their efforts in creating the event. I want to thank the students for their performances and showing their art. Pulling all the art and gathering all the students together is not an easy task. It is a testament to our staff for their commitment to this event each year. And finally, I want to thank Indian Prairie Education Foundation for sponsoring the event. Saturday night, I was in Bloomington to attend the 51st Annual Those Who Excel and Teacher of the Year Award banquet. During the night, several of our staff and a parent were honored with awards, from Georgetown, Ms. Christina Min, Ms. Claire Johnson, and Ms. Saricia Holmes; from McCarty, Ms. Laura Rias; and from Brooks, Ms. Sydney Polk. And one of our parents, Ms. Gillian Gibson, from Georgetown, was also recognized. Additionally, we heard a wonderful speech from Dr. Rachel Lamood, Illinois 2024 Teacher of the Year. Earlier, you heard a board salute about Project Lead the Way that all three of our high schools have recently identified as Project Lead the Way Schools of Distinction. I just want to share just a little bit more information about this distinction. This is the third year in a row that all three of our high schools have earned the award. This is the seventh year in a row that at least two of our high schools have earned the award. And finally, this is the eighth year that at least one of our high schools has earned the award. We celebrate all the Project Lead the Way staff for their hard work over the years, and we must also add Mr. Brian Giovanini, Director of Innovation and Instructional Leadership, for his actions leading this work for the district. This Sunday, we'll be able to celebrate our seniors as we hold our graduation for all three comprehensive high schools. We will start, though, as we always do, this Thursday with Gail McKenzie's celebration. We look forward to attending all of these events and celebrate the hard work of our students. As this is the last Board of Ed meeting before the end of the school year, I will end my comments by thanking our staff for an amazing school year. Their dedication and commitment have helped us achieve the success we have as a district. To our students, thank you for all of your hard work this year. What you thought would be a very long year is almost over. Your hard work has paid off. And to our community, thank you for your engagement in our schools. We are only as good as our community. We have a great partnership, and that partnership enables us to do all that we have been able to do this year for the benefit of our children. I hope all of you have a wonderful summer. Ms. Donahue, I'll now turn the meeting back to you.
Thank you. I now need a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items D through P.
I move that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items D through P as presented. I second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the rule?
Ms. Gents?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
And Ms. Fostick?
Yes.
The motion passes. Next, we move to our action items. I need a motion and second to approve the first reading of Board Policy 7:30, Student Assignment and Intra-District Transfer as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve Board Policy 7:30, Student Assignment and Intra-District Transfer, first reading as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the rule?
Ms. Fostick?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Ms. Gents?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Rising?
Yes.
Mr. Rising, sorry. And Ms. Donahue.
Yes, the motion passes. I need a... Now, I need a motion. I'm not gonna read this long thing related to the bonds, issuing the bonds.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the consideration and action on a resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $156,500,000 General Obligation School Building Bonds Series 2025 for the purpose of paying certain costs of those capital projects approved by a referendum at the November 5, 2024, general election, providing for the levy of taxes to pay said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Do you have some comments?
Just a few comments.
Always a 50-50 shot. All right. Good evening. This evening, I have with me Bob Lewis. He's our district's municipal advisor with PMA Securities. So, we'll just provide a little bit more background on tonight's resolution and then be available to answer any questions. This evening, administration is recommending the Board of Education approve the Bond Parameters Resolution, which will provide for a bond issued not to exceed $156,500,000 of general obligation school building bonds. District voters overwhelmingly approved the district's referendum at the November 5, 2024, general election. The referendum question authorized up to $420 million of bonds to fund capital projects throughout the district. This bond issuance would be the second bond issuance related to the 2024 referendum. The first issuance was completed successfully in December of 2024. That was in an amount of $14,160,000. So, the remaining authorized bond capacity is $405,840,000. So, even after this issue, we will continue to have significant bond capacity to continue to fund facility improvements throughout the district. The parameters outlined in this resolution are consistent with the commitment made to district taxpayers during the referendum campaign. Mainly, the bonds will be structured so that there will not be a tax rate increase resulting from the issuance of these bonds. The parameters are also consistent with prior board presentations and discussions, including our initial plan of finance presented at the October 21 Board of Education meeting. The portion of these bonds that are issued with a maturity of greater than 10 years will be subject to a call option, and this means the board will have an opportunity to refinance a portion of these bonds at a later date if that is advantageous to the district. If approved this evening, we plan on selling the bonds on Tuesday, June 3, by a competitive sale. And this resolution authorizes the CSPO, myself, to conduct the sale in line with the parameters noted. It would give us up to six months to complete that sale, but again, our intention is to complete that in early June. Our municipal advisor and I will continue to monitor market conditions and may update the timing depending on the conditions. As we communicated at the last board meeting, the interest rate market has been a little volatile recently with recent news about the economy, tariffs, and federal policy impacting rates paid by all borrowers. With that said, we expect this issuance to receive a strong credit rating and ultimately receive a very competitive interest rate despite the current environment. We will update the board if any... if there is any changes to the timing. The bond proceeds will be used primarily to fund a variety of projects planned for 2025, 2026, and 2027. These projects include comprehensive improvements to Avonzi Valley and Niqua Valley High Schools, safety and security improvements at all district buildings, and life safety and infrastructure improvements throughout the district. All project components, including budgets and timeline, are materially consistent with the district's master facility plan and the needs articulated during the referendum communication campaign. Administration will be presenting to the board and community a master facility plan update at the June 9 Board of Education meeting. So, with that, Bob and I are available for any questions.
Is there any questions or discussion?
So, just to clarify, you mentioned that we'll be getting an update. So, this particular issuance will get a little bit more detail regarding the impact, where this particular issuance, the areas that this particular issuance will impact?
That's correct, yes. So, we did a small issuance in December, and that was primarily to fund work through this spring and early summer period. This issuance is really designed to fund significant work over the next 24 months or so. And that work will be the focus of our discussion in June.
Okay, perfect.
If I could just... I know you did this last time too, but once you put it out for a competitive bid and you land on what we land on, you'll send a memo to the board and let us know the rates that you got and everything. us know the rates that you got and everything. Okay. Just making sure.
Correct. And yeah, as mentioned, in early December, the issuance we did was very competitive. We had, I believe, 10 underwriters who bid on that specific issuance. The interest rate we received was under 3% for the total issuance, so very competitive. This one will probably come in a little higher than that just because we expect the terms to be a little longer, and again, just current market conditions, but we expect it to be very competitive.
Okay, any further discussion?
I've got some discussion. On page 24 of the resolution, we talk about issuing $28 million per year. Is that correct? As I'm reading that right?
That's, every year beats below that. That's the maximum that was set to correspond to the plan of finance that we've reviewed with you. So I don't expect anything to be that time around, but since that's the maximum parameter for the whole plan of finance, you know, if we need flexibility to make any adjustments, we usually set at the maximum for the plan, but I expect this financing independently to be substantially lower than that.
So we're not giving you parameters on the interest rate. We're not saying you gotta be between X and Y interest rate.
There's a maximum interest rate in there. I believe it's 5.5%, but that's the coupon rate. We anticipate the yield would be somewhere between 4% and 4.25%, but usually municipal bonds, not usually, almost 100% of the time, are sold at a premium. So the coupon rate that you pay interest back is above the rate that it yields because investors pay you a premium to buy that bond.
Right. Okay, and Matt, where are we at with updating the community on the work that is being done from the bond issuance? You mentioned that we're gonna have an update with the board next week?
Yeah, so the June 9 meeting, I think, will provide a significant update to both the board and the community on our progress. We've asked the board for, really, at almost every meeting, we've asked for some approval related to projects for both the summer 2025 and some work continuing. I know that sometimes that comes a bit piecemeal or kind of, you know, one or two at a time, and we maybe haven't provided as comprehensive of a picture where we're at. Again, I'd say we're in line with, and we're consistent with what our master facility plan work was, so we're in line to complete about $40 million worth of work, both this summer and into early fall. The focus of that work is secure vestibules at 11 of our buildings, the Wabonzi Auditorium, beginning district-wide LED lighting replacements, and then variety of infrastructure improvements. We will be kind of corresponding with the June 9 meeting, updating the Safer, Stronger 204 website to really provide a more comprehensive view by project, so showing a project dashboard, if you will, for every major project, you know, updated budget and timeline as we move forward to the project, as well as sort of a summary of all those board actions tied to the project. So we do expect to release that to the community in line with our update at the next board meeting.
Perfect. I think the communication aspect is key. I think we're a little bit behind on that. To say we're gonna be going live with the website in June, when we issued bonds in November and started work already, I think we're a little behind on that. So I'd like to get a little bit more aggressive with the website so that the community can see a little bit more what we're doing. They don't always pay attention to the board meetings as often as I would like. So I think on the website would be nice to be a little bit more aggressive. I think where I struggle with from the board communication standpoint is the consent agenda items. You know, you get a request for to bid the LED lights and then to permit the LED lights. And I don't need to be, from a board disclosure standpoint and kind of communication standpoint, I don't need to be involved in all of that. But we have this master plan, and then we have a bunch of these little consent agenda items that go on the master plan, and I would like to look forward to say, when do we anticipating getting things at the board level? So it's, the master plan says we're gonna design it, we're gonna bid it, and we're gonna do it. When are we gonna bring stuff to the board? And then, kind of in what chunks, so that I can understand as a board member what to expect when. And I know we have a planning calendar, but it doesn't have this level of detail, nor should it. I think there's more of a board master plan level that is something I would request.
Sure. I understood. I do want to just kind of reassert that we are on time, timeline, and we are on budget with the projects we discussed during the referendum. I think it has taken a few months to get some of our design and construction teams on board. That's been some of the recent approvals, including approving construction management teams for both the Wabonzi and Niqwa projects. Those teams bring with them a lot of the resources we're looking to use as part of communication. They have extensive experience communicating with community on these large-scale projects. So, you know, it was important to get those team members on board so that we could start some of that work. And understood, I think, from a board perspective, the point's taken. I think we can do a better job of just cross-referencing some of the approvals with specific projects and timelines and budgets.
I believe you're doing a great job. I think you're on the right page. I think it's communication. And so, you know, you mentioned the team, and I believe we have that in place, but, you know, I just get snippets that we're hiring an owner's representative and then a construction manager, and then, you know, we're amending the architect's agreement and expanding the market's agreement. I would like, you know, kind of just give me a what's happening with the team, who's on the team, what's the team doing, and I think that would help me as a board member saying, to act as an okay, an approval, saying, yeah, we are on time. We've got a team in place. So rather than one-off, one-off, one-off. Thanks.
But to reiterate, we are aligned with the plan that we put in place, yes, so.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the rule?
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Gents?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
And Ms. Donahue?
Yes, the motion passes. All right. Does anyone have any legislative or advocacy or Board of Education update other than we need to recognize Mr. Rising for his recent?
Yes.
You can say a couple words.
Yeah, I guess. It's kind of weird talking about myself. So I was recently appointed IASB Division Director by the Executive Board of IASB for DuPage Division. In that role, I will be representing the whole county of DuPage, which consists of 42 school districts and 294 school board members at the state level. And I hope to do a good job, and I'll serve in that position for the next two years. To that point, we have our first Division Directors Meeting, June 5 and June 6 in Springfield, so I will be attending that. And I'll bring information back to you, just like I will to the DuPage Directors. So that's that. And then, next Tuesday, May 20, or no, oh, it's tomorrow, jeez. Tomorrow, May 20, is the working group that I'm on for IASB that works with Dr. Tony Sanders, the superintendent in his cabinet. We have our meeting tomorrow at 10:30. I asked the question to give us more information about what they're doing on proficiency, other than what has been written that we've seen out there. I kind of want to understand a little bit more behind-the-scenes stuff. So, you know, let me know if you have questions between now and 10:30 tomorrow morning, because we'll be talking with his cabinet on that, and I'll let you know what comes of that and give you feedback, so.
Yeah, that was a long document to read.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
And clearly, they still, they're still, they haven't landed on things, so, yeah.
I also want to recognize Ms. Fosdick on the Lend group. Maybe you could just say a couple words about your role there.
I was asked to represent our school district on the Lend Executive Committee, so I just went to, had my first meeting, the Legislative Education Network of DuPage, keeping tabs on the legislation that's happening in Springfield. And so we just had our first introductory meeting last week. We have the general Lend once-year in-person meeting on Friday, so I'm excited to be able to do that for the next year.
So thank you all for your advocacy and for representing us at these important bodies. So thank you so much. All right, now, we need to move to recess to executive session. I need a motion and a second.
I move that the Board of Education recess into executive session.
I second.
Any discussion? Okay. Michelle, will you please call the rule?
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
And Ms. Gents?
Yes.
The motion passes for recess to executive session.